Good evening, Chatham. Welcome to the January 21, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing no such notification, I'll proceed pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29, 2023, signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Let me begin with the establishment of a quorum. Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Mr. Shell is present. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Dyken.
Present.
And Mr. Metters.
Present.
We have a quorum present. Thank you. This evening, we have a couple of minor items and one big item on our business agenda. We have, we're just going to start with public announcements and agenda requests. We'll then go to the business agenda. Public comments will be allowed or accepted along with each item. The first one that was on the agenda, considering the land disposition agreement with respect to Meeting House Road, has been postponed until February 4. Next, we are going to consider sales on town property at the Monomoy Regional High School for the class of 2025 bake sale. And finally, and most importantly, the town manager will, and the staff, will present the preliminary fiscal year 2026 budget summary and budget recommendations. With that, I will invite, first from the board, any public announcements and/or agenda requests. Jeff?
Thank you, Mike. Just a quick one. Artists are seeking some clarity on the use of Keighley Park for Art in the Park this summer, and I think there's some confusion out there, so I'd like to place that on the agenda and seek clarity.
Yeah, and I've heard that too, and I agree. We ought to discuss that, so please do. Yes, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really had a question either for you or the town manager. I noticed on the upcoming agenda for next week, and I don't plan on being here next week, and I think this is a recurring item, warrant article review. Were you planning to take up any home rule petitions to the legislature? I want to be present when those are discussed. I know we had a couple that didn't get passed, one of which I had proposed, and I would like to be present when those are taken up. That's all.
Thank you. Through the chair, because there will just be three Select Board members at that meeting on the 28th, we tried to restrict it to lessen the normal heavy agenda. So you will hear the budget presentations, but specifically, the warrant articles will not be presented.
Okay, whatever. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from the public? Nobody here. I don't see anybody here in the room. Anybody online? I don't see anybody there. So we will next go to the proposal to have a bake sale for the Chatham Health Fair. I understand that Anna Mylan is here to... Hello.
Hi, Mr. Chair. How are you? I'm here on behalf of the Department of Community Services and the Health Department of Chatham. We'll be having a community health fair on Saturday, January 25th, from 9 to 1:00, or 10 to 1:00, excuse me. And we'd like the Monomoy Regional High School class of 2025 to host a bake sale to benefit their after-prom celebration at that event.
Sounds great. Any questions or thoughts from the board? I take a motion.
I move that the board grant a special permit for the sale of goods and town property at the Chatham Community Center on Saturday, January 25, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with all proceeds benefiting the class of 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. And with that, I will turn the floor over to the town manager and the finance director and whoever else for the budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the budget that's presented tonight represents a culmination of many months' effort by my team, led by Finance Director Carrie, and in close collaboration with all department heads, many of whom are participating in the meeting tonight if you have any questions. I also want to extend my sincere appreciation to them for their dedication and strategic insights, which have helped shape the budget that addresses the needs and priorities of our community while ensuring transparency in government operations. In accordance with the town's charter and general bylaws, I respectfully submit the town manager's proposed FY 2026 operating and capital budgets for your review and consideration. We are proud to present a Staying the Course budget, designed to continue efforts to address current challenges, enhance service delivery, and pave the way for lasting community investment. The budget also strengthens staffing resources to achieve the goal of a resilient and sustainable community for the future. This year's budget transmittal marks a significant shift in approach. Rather than including the status of town initiatives, which will now be detailed in the town manager's annual report, the focus is solely on financial resources required for the upcoming fiscal year. As we continue to refine the digital budget book, you will see an update on community initiatives and other content that will be integrated into the... into, to enhance transparency. Additionally, we are seeking our sights on achieving the Government Finance Officers' Association's Budget Excellence Award as part of our ongoing commitment to improving accessibility and accountability. So I will take this, I will move this, move over and have Carrie take you through the budget and the budget message. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. This slide right here, the 2026 and beyond, this goes over the Select Board Community Vision Statement, reaffirmed on October 29, 2024. The Select Board's goal setting for fiscal year 2026 continued to focus on envisioning Chatham into 202030. A successful budget aligns with community initiatives, Select Board directives, and the fiscal prudence to ensure adequate resources are strategically allocated to meet our shared goals to serve all members of the community. Utilizing SMART goals, specific measurable achievement, relevant, and time-bound, the board identified goal buckets where the town can move forward on initiatives that will encompass previous value statements on a variety of levels to move initiatives forward. A more robust description for each goal can be found in the budget book and on the town's website on the Select Board page. The State of the Town. Currently, the town valuation is $12,341,273,730. That's a large number to say. This is a 6.29% increase from, to FY 2024. For FY 2025 calendar year, the 2024, sorry, calendar year 2024, the average residential value was 1.5 million and the average single-family home value was 1.6. Our tax rate decreased 10 cents from FY 24 to FY 2025. Our AAA bond rating was reaffirmed on June 11, 2024, and our reserves are stable and in compliance with fiscal policies. No use of reserves. We contributed to the stabilization fund in FY 2025 in the amount of $150,000 to comply with financial policies, and our financial policy states we will maintain a balance of 3% to 5% of operating net of debt. So with this current budget, we are actually for FY 2026 at 5%. The town's net OPEB liability as of June 30, 2024, is $16.2 million, an increase of 1.5 million from 2023. As the plan's fiduciary position increased by 1.3 million and our total OPEB liability increased 2.9. The revenues received in FY 24 amounted to just over $1 million. There was $612,000 from tax revenue, 311 in interest, I'm sorry, 311,000 in interest, 150,000 transferred from the overlay in 2024. And we are on pace with achieving 1 million in FY 2025, as we've already collected 563,000. For FY 2026, as done in the past, we are recommending that 150,000 be funded from the overlay surplus as a separate warrant article. Town budgetary components. As we mentioned in the budget summit in October, every year we begin with the available funds of revenue, which includes tax levy, local receipts, and other available funds. Expenses begin with the department heads requesting funds to support a level service budget. As we work through the budget, the process, I'm sorry, as we work through the budget process, it is to have a balanced budget with revenues and expenses. As you all know, we use ClearGov as a budget module. The digit budget book includes budget narratives, budget statements, prior-year accomplishments, organizational charts, staffing history, and the 2026 Capital Improvement Plan requests. You can locate the digital budget book on the Budget Central on the town's website included on the slide. I'm going to go to the digital budget book in a second. This year, like last year, we will be using the digital budget book as our tool for budget So when you go to the town's website, I don't know if it's live as of right now, but it will be live tomorrow. This is the digital budget book. This is what it looks like. We have the introduction, and this is the same book that you guys have printed, but you can go online and you can see the changes that we make throughout the process. You have the transmittal letter, organizational chart, fund summaries, our general fund and the water fund, and then all of the departments. So if you're looking for a specific department, you can just scroll to and go to that specific department. If you want general government, it will give you a list of all the departments listed under general government. If you want, you know, like, we'll just go to your budget, so Select Board, and it will show all of the stuff here. We have budget statements, prior-year accomplishments, what your budget's going to be for the year, how much it's increased. And then we have capital improvements. This is our one-year plan and then the multi-year plan. So the one-year plan is for 2026 of the capital requests. And then we have the multi-year plan, which is of 2026 through 202030, of what has been entered into the system. Any questions on that? No? Sorry. I don't think I... Yeah, I was done with that slide, sorry. I just showed you navigating the digital budget book, so we'll scroll that. Okay. So FY 2026 balanced budget, staying the course. So the FY 2026 budget highlights shows an increase of 7.62% over FY 2025, an operating budget of $43.9 million. This includes funding for five new positions to strengthen the critical operations. The capital plan is presented at $2.9 million, or a 6.7% of our operating budget. This is within our 9% of Chatham's budget and financial management policy. As we work through the budget, it is important to make sure we have a balanced budget, as this slide provides a summary. We are increasing our local estimated receipts at 88% of our actuals received in FY 2024. The overall budget without education has increased 7.62%. There is a proposed increase of 7.97% in education, and the water department has increased I'll go over those in another slide. And our free cash has been certified at $11.1 million to cover the capital budget for FY So the FY 2026 revenue outlook. The tax levy includes the prior-year base of $38.1 million, plus prop 2.5 at $953,000, plus an estimated new growth of $350,000, plus an improved debt exclusion at $8.2 million, plus an estimated amount for Barnstable County tax at $339,000, minus the exempt short-term interest, which equals our total estimated allowable ceiling. With this budget, we are estimating an excess levy capacity of about $2.1 million. Our local receipts are estimated at 88% of the prior-year actuals from FY 2024. As you can see in the graph, our actual local receipts in '23 and '24 are exceeding the estimated receipts for 2025 and 2026. Our estimates are conservative, as the Department of Revenue recommends conservative budgeting practices are essential to avoid deficits. A widely adopted strategy is to project no more than 90% of your prior-year actual Other available funds, receipts reserved for appropriation. These are funding sources to help support the operating and capital budgets, which includes Waterways Improvement Fund, the Railroad Museum Fund, PEG Access Fund, Sale of Lots and Graves, Wetlands Protection Fund, and the Transportation Network Funds. We utilize revolving funds to help support other programs and projects such as recreation and shellfish revolving. We receive Chapter 90 funds for highway state aid each year to help support paving and roads and new sidewalks. We receive Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, and that's to help support debt service, and we also use Waterway User Face. This graph is showing the growth over the past five years of the town of Chatham's hotel motel revenue and meals tax revenue. At the end of FY 2024, the hotel motel revenue collected was $4 million, and the meals tax was collected was $677,000. The revenue has been consistent over the past few years. Our revenues for our 2026 budget include 66% of our revenues are from property taxes, also known as the tax levy, 16% of local receipts, which includes motor vehicle excise tax, hotel motel revenues, meals tax revenue, departmental fees, and such. 11% are from 11 other available funds, not included in the local receipts, such as the sale of lots, perpetual care, public education access funds, and the Waterways Improvement Fund, free cash, and overlay surplus. We also have state revenue. As you can see, we don't receive a lot for state revenue. And 7% is the water budget. So we'll be going over the expenditures. This is an overview of the 2026 preliminary budget. The town operating budget is at $43.9 million. The school assessments are at $11.7 million. As of now, we only, well, I'm sorry. I did write that in here. We have the school assessments. We have the Monomoy School budget, and as of today, we got some preliminary numbers from Cape Cod Tech. I'll go over that in another slide. The school, and the school budgets may change as we go along. The water budget is at $5.4 million, and the five-year capital plan is at $2.9 million, and that's for the items that cost between $10,000 and $250,000.
Carrie, just a quick question, the school assessments, it's $11.7. Now, does that include our 100% of the elementary school?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
And hopefully, we'll get to that too, because that's gone up quite a bit. I just would like to know why.
Yes. Yeah, and they are presenting to the Select Board, I believe it's February 11th. But I do have all that information on another slide. I don't have the details of why it's gone up so much, but I'm sure they'll have that information for you guys.
Yeah, it went up, yeah, went from a million something to two...
Two, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, this is a breakdown of the percentages of the departments for FY 2026. This information is more in detail in your budget book, online, in the budget books that you have in front of you, that you've received. As you will see, looking at this graph, the largest contributors, contributors of the budget include the employee benefits at 11%, Public Works at 13%, Debt Service at 14%, Public Safety at 15%, and Education at 19% of the budget. This provides a comparison of the FY 2026 proposed budget to the FY 2025 budget. As you can see, the total proposed budget for FY 2026 plus education is $55.6 million compared to the $51.6, which is a 7.66% increase. FY 2026 operational factors. These are the major operational factors we are seeing, which I will go over in other slides in more detail. There's contractual obligations, employee benefits, insurance premiums, debt, and education So the proposed FY 2026 budget reflects a commitment to maintaining essential services and meeting our financial obligations. The primary drivers of this year's budget increases are salaries, employee benefits, debt service, and the rising costs of general liability insurance. Personal wages and benefits represent approximately 70.82% ex, I'm sorry, of the town's operating budget, excluding debt service and education. Increases are required for personal services, salaries, wages, including overtime, amounting to 1.4 million or 8.57% over FY 2025. A contributing factor to all budget increases is the labor cost pressure due to limited regional labor market and compensating employees at a livable, wageable stay. Competitive compensation is vital for attracting and retaining skilled staff to deliver high-quality services to our community. The increase in salaries includes cost of living adjustments, step increases, and contractual obligations. The rising health insurance costs and pension contributes reflect broader market trends. These benefits are critical for supporting our workforce and ensuring long-term financial stability, sustainability. The increases in the general liability insurance costs reflect market-wide rate adjustments, and it is our responsibility to adequately protect the community from potential risks. This coverage ensures that the town is safeguarded against financial exposure from the unforeseen events. And also, the debt has increased 9.74% over FY 2025, and this was for already-approved borrowings at the town meeting and ongoing projects that we have in the town. So this slide goes over existing debt as of 6/30/2024, just to also keep in mind that we still have approved projects that we still are working on, that we, that have already been approved for borrowing. Operating budget proposed staffing by departments. So this slide goes over the five positions that were put forward for requests for additional staffs for FY 2026 to address workload and service capacity. These are the following being recommended for 2026. Full-time local inspector for the Community Development Department, full-time boat operator/marine mechanic for the Harbor Master Division, one full-time police officer for the Police Department, and two full-time parks and grounds laborers under Public Works. These five positions will have an impact of $258,000 to our operating budget, not including benefits. Benefits for the full, for the five full-time budgeted at the highest rate benefit is $154,000. So that would be a total of $412,000. The FY 2026 school education assessments. So the preliminary Monomoy Regional School budget was voted by the school committee on January 9, 2025, at $49.6 million, amounting to Chatham's statutory preliminary, preliminary assessment at 11.1, which is 7.97% increase from 2025. This includes capital and the Chatham Elementary School assessment of 2.26. This is the slide that you were talking about. During the budget process, I estimated a 5% increase for the Cape Cod Tech School based on prior years. Until today, we didn't have any further information. Their final vote is on February 27, 2025. We received that they are increasing their assessment by 7%. So my, I just want to explain something. My 5% includes their debt. So I actually came out to almost the same amount. So as of right now, their 7% is just their assessment, which would be an assessment of $429,704. Their debt is at $173,197, with a total of $602,901. So not much off. Not bad. Yep. But I'm just going to leave the 604 until I get final information from them. The schools are tentatively scheduled for February 11 to present to the Select Board. They have no proposed changes to the regional agreement. As noted previously, the Monomoy Regional School budget has increased overall by 6.7, and the Chatham's assessment has increased 7.97% from FY 2025. Their final vote will be in March of 2025. I don't have the exact date. It's in March. This graph shows Monomoy Regional School District's assessments over the past five years. As you can see, in FY 2022, the assessment was 8.5... As you can see, in FY 2022, the assessment was eight point five million, and now in 2026, it's eleven point one. And this graph shows the Cape Cod Technical High School assessments over the past five years. In 2022, the assessment was four hundred and forty-four thousand, and now we're estimating at six oh four for FY 2026. The water department operating budget is funded by revenue generated from water receipts, which continues to be monitored as conservation measures have reduced revenues in 2024 versus 2023 and throughout the first half of the fiscal year. There has been an increase in the water budget due to increased costs for plant maintenance, chemical labor, and debt has increased from 2025 to 2026 thirty-two point five two percent. At this time, we are internally working to propose an updated rate structure for the water department. The proposed water budget for FY 2026 is increasing overall by fifteen point four two percent. Their indirect costs include in the water department for departmental uses such as accounting and treasurer's office. And this also includes costs for health insurance and full-time employees and Medicare costs paid by the general fund and the portion the town pays for the employees for pension as well. This is, this goes over the current water funds debt as of six thirty twenty twenty-four. And again, we still have approved projects with unauthorized debt. Other capital and community priority items. The 2026 capital plan for items that cost between ten, sorry, ten thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand, the total amount, so that's what we're going to be going over right now. The total amount of the requests that we received in our inventory amount to forty-six million. This includes all capital, including the warrant articles. For items that cost between ten and two hundred and fifty, we are recommending two point nine million using free cash in the amount of two point seven. Again, this is six point seven percent of the operating budget net of debt. Any items larger than two hundred and fifty are considered for separate warrant articles, and some of the capital requests that are not recommended for the capital plan in 2026 will be moved to the next fiscal year for consideration. This chart shows the summary of the forty-six million capital department requests and the comparison of FY 2025 actual compared to the FY 2026 proposed. There is a difference of five hundred and twenty-five thousand from last fiscal year.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. Carrie and Jill, can you go back? Yeah, thanks. The, every year we ask about, or I ask about, or somebody asks about the public works department requests at forty-one million, and of course, that gets knocked down. Every year, they ask, what are they asking for? Dump trucks or?
So in that forty-one million?
What's on that list that we're perhaps not paying attention to? Or is it really pie in the sky?
It's all included in here. So all of that forty-six million you're going to see in here. So all of that money, so Public Works asked for thirty-two million dollars for their sewer. So to expand the sewer. So that's what that portion of that is.
Of the forty-one that I see that we see there?
And then we have the three point nine for the transfer station.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that includes the thirty-two million bucks that we're going to have debt exclusion. Okay.
Yep, and then when, if you go into, it should be in the back of your book as well, the capital plan. You'll see all of the, everything that adds up to this forty-six, two eighty-one.
Well, the thirty-two makes a lot of sense. I get that.
Yeah.
There's another nine or so.
Yeah, it wasn't that high last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, though, the requests are everything, but this page addresses, in terms of what we're going to do, only those things that are between fifty and two fifty. Is that correct?
Ten and two fifty.
Ten and two fifty, yeah.
Yes, that is correct. These are only the items for ten and two fifty. The other items will be presented as a separate articles.
And?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, exactly. But it's the, the ten and two fifty are the items that are in the last column.
The last column on the FY 2026 proposed, yes. Maybe I should be.
Well, just in fact, DPW, so that eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, that's for equipment, small projects, sidewalks, all of the the annual as well as the additional needs that they have. Back in two thousand and nineteen, that's when the Collins Center had did an overall inventory of all the town capital requests, and we've been adding to that, maintaining that plan. So that's the five-year plan, and the FY 26 proposed is what we're finding.
Sorry about just on the, you mentioned sidewalks and chapter ninety monies. Do those, do those roll, do we spend all the money annually or in a fiscal year? Or do they roll over? Do we have any balances rolling over at all?
Yes, they do roll over. So they, we receive funds every year, and they submit for specific projects. And whatever is not spent gets rolled over, and we get new money the following year, and then we submit again for new projects. So, yeah.
Do we submit for sidewalks every year or some?
It depends. We do, in the capital plan, actually pay towards, put money towards sidewalks. I've mostly seen, I've only been here for what, a year? But I've only seen the roads get done, mostly.
How much is in there now, do you know, roughly?
I don't know, but I can get that for you. I can get you that information.
Yeah, we'd like to have that.
Sure, yeah.
So you've only been here a year. I just want to, for future reference, the magic word is sidewalks. You can expect some, some commentary if you use that word.
Yes.
Well, we are a pedestrian town, Michael.
Duly noted. Okay. So this is the funding for the capital that is between ten and two hundred and fifty thousand. We're going to be using two point seven for free cash. We'll be using seventy thousand from the waterways improvement fund, twenty-five thousand from sale of lots, and a hundred and thirty thousand from the PEG access fund. There's no use of the tax levy for the funding of our capital plan for 2026, for this one. Community Preservation Act articles. I don't know what happened to my notes. There's nothing in there. So this slide goes over all the articles that were voted and for the applications they received as of November first, twenty twenty-four, and they voted January sixth, twenty twenty-five. These are the approved projects and the amounts, including the administrative budget and the ten percent reserve fund allocation. The total amount is two point three five million for the community preservation projects for FY 2026. They will be coming to the select board to do a presentation as well. Other potential capital articles pending review. So some of these projects that are listed here are ones that you are already aware of because we've gone over some of them already at the capital presentation that we had. So they'll be in discussion throughout the month of February. The transfer station project in the amount of three point four. This is going to be split with free cash in the amount of three million and the use of the tax levy in the amount of four hundred thousand.
Can I just, does my memory, this served me? I thought I remembered that being presented somewhere earlier as three point nine. It's gone down to three four. Can you just give us a picture of how that happened?
Do you want to go over that?
Sure. I'm not sure if Rob's on here, but Rob and the consultants had reviewed the plans and the contingencies and felt comfortable going with three point four million versus three point nine million. So this has just happened within the last week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Then we have the Center for Active Living Renovations to use free cash in the amount of five million. Sewer capital, this is to use the wastewater capital stabilization fund in the amount of a million. We have dredging in the amount of four hundred thousand to use the tax levy. There is the childcare voucher program in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand with the use of the tax levy. Other post-employment benefits to use overlay surplus in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. There's the Chatham Municipal Airport capital items from their capital improvement plan in the amount of fifty-nine thousand to use the tax levy. New ambulance in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand to use the tax levy. And the debt exclusion ballot question for the continuation of the sewer construction expansion in the amount of thirty-two million.
Dean?
So if we were to adopt this proposal, the only borrowing we would see would be the thirty-two million for the sewer project.
That's correct.
And Jill, I think you and I discussed this the other day. My memory serves that in the past, we purchased ambulances before, and we took them off the tax levy. We funded them from the tax levy.
I believe some equipment has been on the tax levy, others through free cash. I believe the Quint truck might have been, because it was a lease, and we have five years of the same payment. So yes, funding FD and police equipment and capital has been done before.
That was before my, the Quint was before my time. I think we purchased a Vector truck for the DPW. Was that on the, do you recall whether that was on the tax levy?
Last year, yes. There was a roll-off truck, and it was around.
That was, that's a different truck.
Oh, a different truck. Okay, sorry.
The vacuum truck. It's pretty expensive.
We try not to borrow for equipment, and I believe that was on, on the tax levy. But I can review it.
Thank you.
So can you tell me what's in the, the million seventy thousand item that sewer cap, identified just as sewer capital?
I don't think it's going to be in there. It's going to be in the budget book.
I thought I had it in the.
Hold on.
Transmittal. Let me just look here. Oh, I have it in the capital.
Yeah, it's right here. I got it. It's page thirty-one of the transmittal. Oh, you found it? Okay. So I've got it right here.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry, because we all get it at the same time.
It's on page thirty-one.
In here.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. It also shows in the budget. Sorry, that was really loud.
I didn't get through the budget book yet.
It also shows on the, in the capital, if you go to the digital budget book, it will show under there, under the sewer department requests.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just so the public knows, it is a pump station, an air system, and system repairs. Is that what?
Yeah. Oops. Were you all done with that slide or?
Go ahead, Joe.
Just refresh my, my memory on the, the belt filter press. Where's that? What action, you know, the, for the wastewater treatment plant, the replacement of, I remember four and a half million, five million or whatever. I just, just refresh my memory. Just bear with me.
Well, go, they would be better.
I didn't hear the first part of your question.
The belt filter press?
Yes, we borrowed for that.
We did last year?
Two years ago.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah.
What we, did we borrow for, there were two segments of it, though, weren't there? There was, wasn't there like four or four and a half? And then we came back and did another million and a half or something?
We did, Michael.
We did. We transferred from the cap, the wastewater capital stabilization to cover the.
The remaining balance, yeah, okay.
And then just to further follow up, sorry, but has it been, has the work been done? Or did we buy it? Is it installed or?
Should have known you'd ask these questions. I have to, so I know that they're working on the design. I'm not sure they've actually purchased the belt filter press, but I will.
Rob is online.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Oh, there he is. Rob, go ahead.
About that, I'm on my phone. But yeah, we put that out to bid. Robert B. Hour was the low bidder, and they, they pre-ordered a lot of the materials. Like the belt filter press has to be manufactured. So that's, takes a while. It takes about six months for that to happen. So we're kind of waiting for the manufacturer to get on the schedule, and we'll probably start construction this fall, I would imagine.
And am I incorrect in saying it's built overseas?
This one, I'm not sure. Yeah, I think it will be built in this country.
Okay, thank you.
That's true.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry. Just as I read the town manager's budget proposal.
Yep.
Thirty-two million again for the sewer capital. That includes, so we'll call it a placeholder, was it one to one and a half million for grinder pumps? Which, and we know that hasn't been resolved yet. We're still waiting a recommendation from you.
Yes.
Okay, but there's some money in there.
Yep.
To accommodate that, as that goes forward.
Correct. We just need the select board to vote the policy, but we haven't presented it yet.
So it, it just, two comments. One, a question and two comments. The, the increase in debt service, well, first of all, I think it's worthy of clarifying every time the subject comes up, that debt service includes both principal and interest.
Correct.
So we're paying, in addition to paying interest, we're paying money back that we borrowed in some prior time.
Yes.
Can you tell me, there is a pretty significant increase from twenty-five to twenty-six in debt service. Is there one or are there one or two projects that we can, that we, that we are now paying debt service on that, that just came on stream in the last year or two?
Yeah, there was a lot of clean water trusts borrowings that came on for the twenty twenty-six that were going to be paying, that were paying on. I just know the numbers in my head. It's like CW forty-seven and CW forty-seven A that just started.
Okay.
So.
So basically, most likely, it's sewer stuff.
Yes.
Be a pretty good guess. Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then I'll just make a comment on this. I know we'll probably discuss it in greater detail, but I think this presented a, I think, a challenge to figure out how to allocate the various resources that you have to address the needs that I think everybody agrees we have to address. And I, as in prior comments, I had expressed some reservations about using as much as five million for the CFAL. I had expressed a belief that the capital for the transfer station was a high priority. I, I think just as a general matter, for what it's worth, you've done a pretty good job here of working out allocations here that make sense. There is, I guess it's, what's the number? Almost a million. Million five ninety-five is going to be on the tax rate, which is a one-time item. I, I think that's a, that's a, at least on the surface, a good, a good compromise. I'm operating on the assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's more or less, I don't know, somewhere between thirteen and sixteen or seventeen cents on the tax rate. Is that a fair estimate?
Yes, probably.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide. So this slide goes over the balance of free cash of, as of right now. So the beginning free cash that we had was eleven point one million. We're going to be using two point seven for the FY 2026 capital improvement project requests, five million for the Center for Active Living Renovations, and the transfer station capital request at three million. That leaves us with an ending free balance, free cash balance of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars as of right now.
And I guess my only question about that, in conversation particularly with the town manager, I've always understood that there was a, not necessarily a policy, but a desire to try to keep in reserve some number for unexpected capital needs during the course of the year. The number that I thought was more or less. The number that I thought was more or less what was the target was more in the two to three million dollar range. So my question is, are you comfortable with, obviously you've presented it, so you must be comfortable with it, but I'd like to hear that.
Yes, I'm comfortable with this. Last year, we turned back roughly the same amount of money. We didn't have any supplementals that we needed at town meeting. We did use a slightly small amount of free cash for unpaid bills that came in. I like to keep a little bit of money just for those cases, if something comes up. I don't know about the two million dollars turning back, but this I'm comfortable with.
I think this would be the minimum amount that we're comfortable with. We always like to have, as you said, up to two million dollars. It's just some extending circumstances of projects that were programmed or anticipated a couple of years back and now moving forward for presentment in FY twenty-six, but I'm very comfortable with what's being presented.
Okay, yeah, Corey.
Just to follow up on part of that question with the balance being at, you know, four, six, nine, one, eight, eight. And it's going to be a hard question to ask, probably a more harder question to answer because I know formally, there's been nothing put on your desk or the select board's desk, but we're all aware of what's going on with the schools, the conversations about some of the projects with the siding and roofing and other concerns that have been, being addressed and continue to be addressed. So in the case, something comes up from a financial perspective, is this one of the sources that we might have to kick the can a little bit on? Or do we have some kind of general feeling of, you know, if this goes in a one direction or another, where we might have money available, depending on what route the conversation comes on? I know we don't have anything harder in front of us, but we've got to be somewhat prepared to kind of address it. Address it, yeah.
So I think with that situation, we would typically fund it either through the tax levy, have an article in town meeting, or a special town meeting, warrant it, depending on the timing, or there could be a borrowing authorization too. So I do know that the middle school siding project, I don't have confirmation for sure that it's coming back, but we had programmed two million dollars as the Monomoy Regional School District's borrowing authorization that we would take to town meeting. So I know that the matter is evolving. Typically, we try to have our free cash certified by September or October, so if something comes up where we may need to contribute, we can certainly tap into free cash. It's just a matter of the timing of free cash certification to the tax classification here and when you're setting the tax rate. So it's usually about a month apart, but certainly in those unanticipated emergencies could be funded other than free cash.
Dean, go ahead.
Can't you also use the general stabilization fund? I don't mean the sewer stabilization fund. We have, in other, in cities, they call it an E and D fund. I think the school district calls it that, excess and deficiency.
Yes, we have that.
We have, how much is in that? A couple of million right now?
Yeah, a couple million.
And could you also, I was going to ask this question anyway, the excess tax levy, we don't actually tax to the excess, do we?
We do not.
But you could.
Mm-hmm. We could, but we haven't.
And the last question on the free cash, and I know the finance committee has always thought we had too much free cash. I know that's been an issue for them, they're certainly not going to balk at this. But doesn't this amount get replenished over the course of the year so that by the time the certification comes, comes in, it could very well be higher than that? It could be in the two or three million range, which Mike is talking about. Is that possible?
So I don't think there's time to recertify free cash, so you have to get a recertification of free cash and that usually, because we're already going to be using this at town meeting in May, we could try to get recertified before the end of the fiscal year, but I don't recommend it. I would wait until the end of the fiscal year to get recertified. Usually people get, towns get recertified if they have like a fall town meeting and they use their free cash. So they get certified in October, they have a fall town meeting in November, they use some free cash, and then they might get recertified again.
So when, in the ordinary course of events, when would the certification take place?
So the certification wouldn't take place until October.
So what I'm suggesting, what I'm asking is whether by October, that fund could be replenished?
Yes, it will be. Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, because you have, but you have all this year's activity to, in theory, replenish it, especially if there's excess local receipts, I think would be the driver there. And I think that's been the case in the last two or three years, especially last year and the year before. We've had, you know, pretty nice excess local receipts, budget at eighty-five, and then we get quite a bit. So what I think, if I might just.
Yeah, please.
What I think, I heard you guys just say is that, should we get, and we think we have probably a large ask coming for the middle school that is not yet baked into this budget. I think, I think we can fairly assume that it's coming. Should we get that ask? The options are to reduce the free cash use here and bond some of this, or bond new money for, for the school ask, or use the tax levy. Is that, is that what I just heard? And your proclivity is to use bonding, is what I think I just heard Jill say.
For, yes, for the MRSD, but for, for us, I wouldn't recommend reducing what we're proposing as a town, only because it, for any capital items going to the school, it's going to require both towns to approve it. So this, our financing plan for our capital items is solely for Chatham. And again, the timing might work out, or the timing might be that we just authorize the school district to do the borrowing, and then that doesn't hit our assessment for another year or two.
You know, that's a, that's a very good point. I think that's likely what, that's a very good point. I think that's likely what would happen in this case, yeah.
And I think so, but I'd like to, from my feeble mind here, to clarify if, to use a factual hypothetical, if the, if the, if the school district committed, contracted to do the siding and so forth project, let's say they committed to do that sometime in the summer of this year, and let's say that number was the number that's been thrown around here, which is six million dollars. At what point would we anticipate that we would, and assuming that we had the appropriate agreement to fund our portion of it, at what point would we have to be authorizing a bonding, a bond authorization in order to sustain our portion?
So the school would need to get that, the district would need to get it on our twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting, and the first year assessment won't hit our assessment until FY twenty-seven. And if that's the case, it would come off of the tax rate for our, our amount to fund their, their capital exclusion or their capital borrowing. So I don't think, and we have a meeting next week with the superintendent and the town of Harwood, I'm not sure any of this will hit our tax rate or free cash or funding source until FY twenty-seven, but we need to confirm.
Yeah, and that's, I hope I'm clarifying what Jeff was expressing as well.
Yeah, no, you have, and I think that's, again, I think that's the most likely scenario. I think that's probably what will happen.
Okay.
I just, one other.
No, go ahead.
I'll hush, but I have had some inquiries about, you know, how did we get eleven million dollars of free cash? So I just, just be, you know, I think it's a very legitimate question and there's some confusion about, not confusion, but interest in, you know, last year versus this year, et cetera, et cetera. So I just think we need to really be prepared to fine tune that messaging and really understand where we did generate all that free cash from. It's a big number. It's a big number. We've always enjoyed some free from quote-unquote free cash, but that's, that's a much larger number than we're used to.
Yes, I agree.
We've talked about, we usually, in the last few years, averaged about seven million. And because of the, the timing of the reimbursements, we had five million or so held until the reimbursements came in this fiscal year, which Carrie was able to certify. We have a couple of slides on that, so I'm not sure you want to present it tonight, but we, we have it for when the board is considering the articles for the capital.
Yeah, I think folks want to understand what was turned back, what was generated from excess, receipts, et cetera, et cetera. What, what are the genesis of, what's the genesis of the dollars, in other words?
Yeah, I was just going to echo that. I mean, I wouldn't mind having it presented tonight because I think there's some perception that there was a bookkeeping error on the part of the town, and that really wasn't the case. You explained it in your, in your budget message, that there were, there were grants that we received, but they were charged against because of debt payments we owed. Is that correct?
So when you have deficits in accounts such as grants or any of your other funds, your borrowing accounts, this is going to probably get into a little bit more detail, but when you have deficits in all your other funds, so basically you're using like a pot of money that's not really there yet, right? So that's why the Department of Revenue holds that money against you and says, okay, you don't have these funds right now. We're going to hold this until you receive the money. So that's why it's important to get the reimbursements by a certain date for your grants and to make sure that you're getting enough funds to cover your borrowings and such like that because the Department of Revenue says you don't have that money, so we're not going to give it to you, we're going to hold it.
So had we received those grant monies earlier, this would not be eleven million.
Correct.
For the current year.
That's correct.
It would be significantly less. So it was a DOR policy in practice.
Yes, it is a DOR policy. Yes, that's correct. And you have to receive the funds by a specific date in order, when you go get your free cash certified. If you don't have those funds, then they hold it against you.
Thank you, Jeff, for bringing that up.
Yeah, no, that's clarifying to me and that's, I thank you for that.
Does that, does that help? I do have a slide on it, but if that helps then.
Yeah, and I think that, I think we should share this slide, doesn't have to be tonight, but that should be shared.
Okay, I'll do it after.
And I, I hope this doesn't confuse the issue here, but would it be correct to say that if we blocked out a period of, let's say, four years, ending with fiscal, the last year for which free cash was certified, which I think is twenty-four, is that right?
Yeah, the last year it was certified twenty-four.
So if we block out four years and we add up the amount of funds that have closed to free cash over that whole four years, it's going to be the same number no matter when, which year it closed in.
Right.
So this eleven million happens to be where we are at the end of those four years, but whether it closed, whether it closed in one year or another, we'd still, we'd still would have had the same total of funds closing to free cash over that period of time. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I'll get through this presentation and I have a couple of slides on free cash if you want. I can go over that again. So this is actually the last slide of the presentation, which is the twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting calendar. So this shows the timeline of important dates for the budget. The finance committee and preliminary recommendation is due to the select board on February eighteenth. The select board approved FY twenty-twenty-six budgets are transmitted to the finance committee on February twenty-fifth. The finance committee warrant article recommendations are due March eleventh. The annual town meeting warrant closes on March eighteenth. Annual town meeting is on May tenth, and the annual town election is May fifteenth. So that's that. Now I will find the other slide.
So while you're doing that, based on that timetable, is this presentation going to the finance committee as is right now?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
It will be this Thursday. So this slide right here is, goes over the last few years of our free cash and what it was certified as. So at the end of twenty-twenty-one, well, actually, I put in the fiscal years that we're currently in. So in twenty-twenty-one, we had, we were certified four point three million. In FY twenty-twenty-two, we were certified at eight point six million. Twenty-twenty-three, we were certified at seven point five million. And FY twenty-twenty-four, it was certified for two point six. And then, as you can see, there's a decline from twenty-three to twenty-four. And then we had our certification for twenty-twenty-five at eleven point one. So at the end of FY twenty-twenty-three, the amount certified is lower because there was, again, I just went over this, the deficits in the funds such as the borrowing accounts or grant accounts. And then the DOR basically holds those deficits against us. So we didn't receive our reimbursements or our borrowings in time when the certification took place. If we got recertified in the year, we could have got recertified and then, you know, if you receive money and you get money for borrowings, we could have gotten recertified and then received the money in the middle of the year, but that's typically not done too often. So anyways, due to the timing, the five million was released and then our free cash was certified at the end of FY twenty-four. And what we would have received at the end of twenty-three, for the end of twenty-twenty-four, the two point six, we would have received it then, but we received it in twenty, for twenty-twenty-five instead. So this is the slide I had presented previously for the timing scenario. So as you can see, if we didn't get that hold against us, we would have received seven point six at the end of FY twenty-twenty-three for twenty-twenty-four last year, and we would have only received six point one for twenty-twenty-five.
And the seven point six would have been spent.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
How do you say that?
I'm because it's a big number.
Maybe we would have.
There's an appetite to spend. I mean, there were a lot of projects that we.
Okay, fair enough. But in fact, it wasn't spent, I mean, all we spent was the.
The two, the two point something, right.
The balance is added to the six.
Correct. Yes. So the amount that you don't spend, say we didn't.
Yeah, it carries over.
Yes, it carries over. Yep.
The year is a little confusing, but I, that's illuminating, to be honest with you. It's very helpful.
Yeah, it's not new money. It's money that the town would have closed out on June thirtieth, no matter what, had we had the reimbursements, then the, the hold from, from the DOR would have happened. We, I don't think I've ever worked in a community that recertifies free cash. I haven't heard it to be done that often, but certainly, free cash was certified in February of twenty-twenty-four and then again in October of twenty-twenty-four. So just, I, I think that the finance team was trying to figure out a solution on how not to have it charged and in, in the end, it, it was, it is what it is and that's what it was presented. But you're right, there wasn't any errors or, or, I mean, we can't hide funds anyway. They're nowhere to be hidden, but it was just a timing issue.
So as long as we're on the subject, free cash, in, in simple terms for the laypeople, is basically funds that we didn't forecast we were going to get, okay? Or funds that we forecasted we were going to spend and we didn't spend them. Is that, is that a fair statement?
So, well, this, this slide goes over the exact definition of free cash, but to be fair, yes, we estimate our local receipts conservatively. So whatever we receive above that is going to become enclosed to our fund balance. So we receive, say we estimate eleven million and we get thirteen, so then there's an extra two million dollars right there, right? And then we budget for our expenses every year at a certain amount, and then whatever we don't use for expenses gets closed out as well. So.
I think you said the same thing.
So with those two combined.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, and I'll, I'll put my own two cents in on the subject. I don't understand why that's such a bad thing.
I don't either.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay, good.
I'd rather disagree with that.
Yeah, okay, good.
You get consensus.
I'm done.
Yes, sir. First of all, the slides that you have done tonight, including the free cash slides, can we have those disseminated to the board and posted to Budget Central for the public?
Sure.
Because I think they're very illuminating.
Yeah.
You mentioned the receipts and how we estimate them and again, and historically, the finance committee thought we were estimating them too low. So we typically have done it at eighty percent, and now you're bumping it up to eighty-eight percent. Is.
I think we were eighty-five last year.
Were we eighty-five?
We were at eighty-five last year, yes, and this year I estimated them at eighty-eight.
Okay. Okay, so that's close. And the last, the last question, again, this is an issue that I know FinCom raised last year. The insurance costs, are all our buildings insured, every piece of town property?
They should be. I know the insurance company does reach out here and there on certain particular projects to ask if they're complete.
Okay.
There was one recently. There was one recently on some wells that were going on.
It was a pump station?
It might have been a pump station. But she, she's really good at reaching out about specific projects to make sure they're complete.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
So I, I know Ms. Gibbs is waiting. Let me just ask you a quick question, and, and Mr. Dykens also would like to pop in. But do you have, and I know this is a hard one, maybe it's impossible, but do you have any idea of what you think free cash might end up being for twenty-five?
I haven't even looked at those numbers. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't really know.
Okay. If you haven't, you haven't. I, I, done.
We would have more of a closer look towards, more like April.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm going to bounce around a little bit here, and I apologize in advance, but we've talked about excess levy capacity, which we don't tax to. We mentioned the elementary school. I just had a question there. Was this a year that, that, and refresh my memory, did the region negotiate teacher contracts this year? Do you know?
They negotiated them last year.
Okay.
Yeah, so that might be a reason why, yeah, a driver for their...
A driver, the increase. And, and where are we on water rates?
So currently, Rob and I and a company called Waterworth are working together to get a, some rates put together to present to the Select Board, so they can get approved and be done. And hopefully, they'll be soon, because we have a meeting actually next week with Waterworth, so...
So you're working, you're looking, okay, you're analyzing where we are and kind of looking at expenses and covering expenses.
Yep, and the borrowings and all that for the water fund, yep.
And then, and then, you know, I put a, I put a placeholder in for paid parking every time we talk about a budget, but I'll do a placeholder here as well. I think that we are leaving some money on the table here in the town. It's a semi-controversial topic, but I, I really think local receipts could even bolster even more with, with, with paid parking. And I think we have plenty of good places to put it, those dollars to good use. Our infrastructure for one, schools for another, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, I do a little infomercial on paid parking every time I get a chance. I do, I think that, I mean, I'm going to advocate for the time has come, I believe. Where was I the other day? I was in the city of Boston the other day, Washington Street. There's a meter. Take out your debit card or your credit card, put it in the meter, you automatically get an hour. It's, you know, cents on the dollar, very, you know, fifty cents, whatever, a buck, whatever. Boom, done. I mean, couldn't have been any easier. Painless, seamless, and I'm sure profitable, anyway.
Yep.
Dean?
I'll hush there. Thanks.
Just one final comment. I forgot to say this earlier. I did like the restructuring of the budget presentation, as opposed to previous, previous years are fine, but I like the way you redesigned this presentation in the book and focused solely on the financial aspects, and left the accomplishments for the Town Managers' annual report. I, I, I found that a lot, I thought that made a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thanks. If there's nothing else up here for the moment, Ms. Gibbs, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, I didn't realize the meeting started at five, so I didn't log on till five-thirty. So I, my first comment is about the free cash, and if, if as a layperson, just member of the public, my understanding of free cash is it is money that we appropriated at a town meeting at some point for a various projects, whether it was staffing or whatever. And for whatever reason, those things didn't happen. And then the Department of Revenue says, okay, you saved all this money because, you know, it was a personnel issue or whatever. And so now, we have that money appropriated, but it hasn't been spent, and now it's being reallocated to spend on something else that we haven't, you know, that the town did not approve. And that we have appropriated it, but we haven't spent it until you actually borrow it. So when you talk to people about free cash, it's not free, in that it's money sitting there, and we're going to spend it, and then we're going to borrow on it, and then it's going to cost us money. And, but I think also by using the free cash to fund the CFAL and those kind of things, if I'm not mistaken, they may only require a majority vote versus a two-thirds vote. Whereas, you know, some of that money may have required a two-thirds vote before. So, you know, the public needs to know, it's not free. We haven't borrowed it yet. We've appropriated it, but we haven't, you know, we're not going to feel it until you actually spend it. I'm very concerned about eleven million dollars and basically spending all of it, but a half a million, when it is on, you know, some, the CFAL, the transfer station, and some other projects, when we have the schools, which are a priority, and, and should be, we should be reserving money for the schools. Monomoy is going to cost us a lot of money. The elementary school is going to cost us a lot of money. That was in disrepair. We didn't really know how much work needed to be done, done on that when we redid the, the agreement with Harwich and took that school over. And so what's going to happen is, we're going to come to May town meeting, and then there's going to be this huge thing, oh my God, the schools have mold, we've got to spend five million dollars, and we have no free cash. You know, that should be the priority. We should be most concerned about the schools and what that's going to cost us. Because I've been reading the newspaper, and Harwich is on the bandwagon again, that Chatham's a wealthy community, and we should be paying more. And they're going to come back, and they want to do, redo that agreement. And so we should put that into the equation when we're moving forward. Secondly, with respect to water and sewer, I've been asking for this ever since Bob Duncanson left. We were supposed to sewer two-thirds of the town by twenty-thirty. There are about eighty-two-hundred properties. That means five thousand properties should have been sewed, connected to the sewer by twenty-thirty. It's fast approaching. We only have about nine hundred. These are round numbers. Nine hundred actually connected to the sewer. And we've spent, you know, a couple hundred million so far. We were told that for the sewer, we were going to have projections as to what the five-year plan was, how to get to that number by twenty-thirty, how many homes would be actually connected. We have people in Chatham that are in that first two-thirds that will, have been paying for the sewer for years and will never get connected. We re, we redid the system and went up Meeting House Road so that we could sewer East Harwich for six million dollars. We should be focusing on the sewer, and it, it was mentioned, it was alluded to in the packet, but it doesn't point out that we've only got about twenty-five percent of that number sewed, that we're supposed to have a hundred percent of the two-thirds by twenty-thirty. And how much is that going to cost us? Because I see that, these projections are only good for like through twenty-twenty-six. We need to know what our five-year objectives are going to be, and how much we're going to get hit with over the next five years. Sewer's huge. The other one that's huge is water. Again, we've been talking about it, and I know Mr. Castro has, for a long time now. We need increased storage capacity. We have eleven wells. Most of them are old. They need repair. We have to have iron and manganese treatment in all of them in the event PFAS shows up, because you can't put in PFAS filtration until you have iron and manganese. That's going to cost money. And we, we wanted to have estimates over the next four to five years, what it's going to cost for iron and manganese for the eleven wells, the repairs on the eleven wells, increased storage capacity, and the potential for locations for new wells. What's that going to cost us? It's going to be significant. It's going to be in the hundreds of millions. Water and sewer should be, and the schools should be our top three priorities. And I don't see any of that in this budget here. So I would hope that, and, and we were supposed to have all those numbers. We were promised this a year ago, that we would be provided with the five-year plan for water and sewer by December, and it's now January, and we still don't have those projections. And the third thing I'd like to talk about is the Inflation Reduction Act. You know, President Trump has said that he is putting a halt on spending for the Inflation Reduction Act, which is basically climate change. It includes windmills, electric vehicles, and solar. If the money has not been distributed from EPA federally to the local towns, we may not be getting those funds. And I think that that has to be incorporated into the planning as we move forward. Have we, do we already have that money for the electric vehicles? Because it is federal money. It's not state money. State, the state DEP is only administering the Inflation Reduction Act. It's a federal program. So if those monies are being suspended, we need to know what grants we're not going to be receiving for a whole variety of things in town, whether it's the electric vehicle installations, solar, those kind of things, and how that's going to impact our budget going forward. So those are the three things I have concerns about as you move forward into the discussions for each of these line items. I think the schools have to take top priority, and water and sewer. And I think that that's, the public health and safety was in our mission statement initially, and I don't see it in there anymore. And I think water, sewer, and the schools are public health and safety, and they should be the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? At the moment, I don't see anybody. I, I was going to make one, one other comment, and it's really more to inquire a view. The, the increase of seven-six, I guess it is, is a, it's a good, robust number. I, I'd like to call attention to the fact that, and I'm very supportive, and I, and I think that's partly, if you confirm it, what contributes to it. We, we made some very, I think, good movement in the, the settlement of our contracts with fire and, and...
Police.
And, and the emergency folks and police. And that, that was a, they made an aggressive ask. We, we responded, I think, in a, in a very positive way. We're getting what we're paying for, but it, it's, it ain't cheap, and that's reflected in this budget. And I, I think that's worth mentioning. The other thing I'll mention, and I, again, I support it, but the, the five new people to deliver on the service commitments of the town and the staff, those also are not cheap. I think, you know, if you add in the, the benefits, it's four-hundred-thousand-dollar, four-hundred-and-ten, whatever it is, that's what we're, we're, we're putting our money where our mouth is in terms of, of service delivery. So I, I, you know, I wish it weren't seven. I wish it were lower, but as I said, things don't come cheap these days.
So we've been talking as town managers in our group, and all of us were talking about our budget messages and how we customarily refer to inflation. And our local inflation is our, our regional labor cost, trying to recruit and retain people, and high-quality people, and that we're, that's probably our greatest pressure for this year's budget. It's seventy-one percent of our overall budget is for personnel and, and salaries. And so, I mean, we, we need people to perform the services. So it's an investment, but that seems to be across the board with, with all of the towns, this, you know, super restrictive regional labor pool for us.
Understood.
Anything else? I think that's it. Do you have anything else for us?
I'm all done.
You're all done? Okay. I guess I'll take a motion.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, Chatham. It is six-twenty-four.